Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay today. Welcome to our board meeting for the month of August. I'm going to turn it over to our chair.
Okay, good evening, good evening, good evening. Thank you, any families who are on the line. Thank you, board members and members of the school staff. And again, just echoing apologies for the delay to our start. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:28. And we can start screen sharing. We're going to jump in.
So let's start with routine business.
Okay. So first, could I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's board meeting? It was circulated in advance. Could I have a motion from a board member to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda, Charles.
Seconded by Mahal.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Melody, I see that you are having trouble hearing. If you want to pop out and pop back in potentially, that might help. I know that the other folks right now can hear, so I'm not sure what would, what we could shift. You could also call Roberto on the phone and we can put you on speaker. So you're right next to the meeting as well. Okay, we're going to move on to an approval for the July minutes. Again, they were circulated. Thank Charles for that. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve by Mahal.
And a second. I'll be a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay. So we're going to go into new business and I'll hand it over to Joe. Go for it.
Well, today I'm super excited to share what's going on in LEAP these days. I wanted to start off with sharing our school year 2022-2023 academic goals and priorities. Last spring, we started a lot of training on academic rigor for our teachers. And we were working on establishing a culture of learning and feedback. We continue to focus on making sure that our instruction is rigorous for students as we promised our families. And this year, we're super excited to be able to provide our teachers with intense training in math in BLA and SLA. So teachers are super, super excited to receive training and practice and setup of their classrooms. So academic rigor is one of our priorities this year, continuous monitoring. We want to make sure that our teachers know every scholar in their classroom, that they know how they're coming in, what they need, and that they're needing all of their students need. And dual language, you know, this is something that we want to make sure that all of our teachers are equipped on what dual language looks like, sounds like, and feel like. So we have partnered up with a dual language expert. So we are strengthening our dual language practices this year. So we're super excited about that. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to share with our families, with the public, our three priorities for this school year. And teachers are very engaged and involved in training. So I wanted to just show these pictures of New Teacher Institute and how teachers are demonstrating our virtudes throughout their training every single day. And we don't focus on desarrollando capacidad. And here in this picture, you can see one of our flyers, because our teachers are so invested in leveraging each other's strengths and continuing to grow as educators. Academic updates. So for academic updates, I wanted to share this because this is something that LEAP has not done in the past. And it's really helpful to really launch a strong school year. So we're doing pre-entry assessments for all of our new students, including all of those second grade, rising second grade that came from Brooklyn Rise and, you know, other areas of the community. So our kids are, we are assessing and providing our reading assessment so that we know exactly where our kids are when they're coming in on day one. We're also doing our HR home questionnaire interview for language to make sure that we know where our kids are in Spanish, English, or both, so that we are strategic on how we support language development in our school. Summer school, oh my goodness, this is amazing news. We had an amazing summer program that was, we provided, we got a grant, a Bloomberg grant, and training from Lavinia Group for all of our summer school teachers. And we had a 20% growth in reading in five weeks. So that says a lot about the impact that I look forward to and anticipate we will have this year. Because if we did that in five weeks and Lavinia is training our teachers tomorrow, you can imagine the impact that that's going to have on our kids. So as I said before, new teachers who started August 1st and returning for all staff started August 8. Just three weeks ago, I wanted to share that we still had eight lead teacher vacancies. And all of our classes now have a lead teacher to open up our school year. So that's super exciting. So I want to shout out everyone that has supported with sourcing and recruiting and just talking to the community and friends and their networks about our school, because that has supported recruiting our teachers. I want to stop there for any questions before we move on to our, talk a little bit about our red campus.
Can I ask you, so that's amazing about the lead teacher vacancies being filled. Do we have what remaining vacancies? I know it's hard right now for schools to staff, but are there any other vacancies that you're still trying to fill?
Yes, we are still looking for a music teacher.
Okay.
That said, we have two music teacher candidates this week. So we're hoping we could fill that vacancy. And we have six associate teacher vacancies at this time across grade levels.
Okay, okay, great. And then what did you measure the reading growth on? Or what tool were you using to measure the growth from the summer school?
So Lavinia also provided the assessments and they were, of course, aligned to the standards
Great.
based on the curriculum that they provided for summer.
Excellent. Yeah, I heard really great things about the Lavinia training for summer school. So that's neat that we were able to offer that here. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so we're going to move on now to our charter revision for the red campus. I just wanted to provide a few update, updates on our red campus. There is, the last couple of weeks, we've had from waxing to moving furniture to storage units, pulling many furniture and curriculum items from our storage units. And we are more than halfway red. Blue campus is 95% ready to open the doors to our kindergarten kids on Thursday. And red campus, it's just amazing the work that has happened. I mean, everyone has worked as a team around the clock. If you have any experience with this, it is not, it's not a walk in the park to add another building, to add another campus. And the way that we've come together through out change, it just has made us a stronger team. So I wanted to bring up some of the items for our charter revision. We have completed CPR, AED, fire guard training. Two of our members in blue campus, two of our staff members in red campus are fire guard trained. We have FDMY inspections happening this week, tomorrow in blue campus, and Wednesday in red campus. And that is crucial, right? We want to make sure that our buildings are safe. So we have that happening. But we still need to get approval from our board so that our kiddos are ready to walk into red campus and we could cut that bridge on Monday, August 29.
Great, so on that note, just for board members who were on the call last Thursday or the Thursday before, that we needed to make sure that we have a full quorum. So we're actually going to hold, we already did this vote, but we just needed one more person on it for it to be fully accepted by the authorizer. So we are waiting on Alejandro, one of our board members. He is going to be on momentarily. Right, he's going to be on momentarily. And so I think what we can do, because this is in the motion we've already agreed upon, that we want to support, of course, and approve our kids and our staff moving into the red campus full time. We're going to wait for him to come on and we'll vote. So we can move on to other business. And once he joins, we'll go back to that.
So let's move on to our committee reports. I know that for finance, right, for finance, we didn't meet this month. We don't have an update on finance, finance right now. We're good to go. Next month, definitely, we will have a report on finance.
Yep, and just as a note for everyone who's listening, this is pretty standard. July was our annual meeting, so we did the review and approval of the budget. Our team is continuing to monitor the budget, but there's no changes from July to August. School has not been in session. And so we're leaving that as is and we'll pick back up in September with a full committee, finance committee report. I will talk briefly for the executive committee. We did meet this past month. We have been talking about a number of things, including board development, which we'll say a little bit more of, of how do we potentially add additional board members or explore what it might mean to bring in another family board member and just move through that process. We also have been thinking about our leadership structure and how we can best support, how we can best support, wonderful, how we can best support Joanna and all the work that she's doing. And then we've just been trying to move things along from the executive committee. Hello, Alejandro is joining us. Give me a thumbs up if you can hear us. Yes, so before we go to the academic and accountability meeting report, I'm actually going to take us back to this motion so we can get this vote to approve. I know Alejandro is out supporting lots of other schools as well in his day job. And so we appreciate his time on the board. So this is, I'm going to say the motion and I'm going to make the motion and I'll ask for a second just to like restate it. This is a motion to approve LEAP's expansion and moving into the red campus formally. I make the motion to approve that expansion into the red campus at the address of?
475.
54th, 53rd Avenue.
475 53rd Street.
Yes.
Street.
Okay, I make the motion to approve. Could I have a second? Sorry, Alejandro, Melody, Melody got the second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Great, so that passes. Charles, you have our voting members noted?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that passes. Alejandro, thank you so much. I know we gave you that context before and feel free to hop off if you need to.
Thank you, all apologies, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the last piece is the academic accountability and accountability meeting. So I'll just talk a little bit briefly. And Mahal, if you want to add anything, Roberto was also there as well. We got to hear a lot about how Teacher Institute is going and starting with our new teachers as early as that first week of August. Really sounds like training has been pretty intense, but also super valuable. It's great to hear about teachers' morale and their investment. Also, the three focus areas that we're talking about this year and particularly the like deep reinvestment in dual language. Obviously, dual language is part of everything we do. But right now, we're putting some extra focus to kind of get it to a really high standard that meets our vision and our mission, not just the, you know, the next step. Mahal, do you want to add anything from that meeting that stuck out to you?
No, that pretty, pretty much sums it up. I was very pleased to see all the plans for, for refocusing on dual language and making sure we're meeting the targets you want to meet. But yeah, no, that's, you pretty much summed it up.
Great, and Roberto was there as well, so I'm just going to invite him to share from his perspective.
Well, I just want to reemphasize how grateful I am to the leadership team with Joe and, and all her team members focusing on what we do. And what we do at LEAP is dual, is dual language educational. It's an instructional model, it's unique, it's of high rigor, and it requires, and it requires a lot from our teachers and it requires a lot from our families and the students. So keep doing that, keep going in that direction. I'm very happy to hear that we're getting some scholarly expertise to help guide that along. And there's other additional tools that I know Joanna and the team have been employing and will continue to employ, step assessment, et cetera. So thank you for all that you're doing.
And just to be, that's right, and just to be super explicit, the scholarly expertise is this partnership we've been talking about with Dr. Buto, who has been coming in and giving us additional guidance of, okay, we've had a dual language model. How do we take it to like the absolute strongest implementation of it? And so it's really exciting. That's it for committees.
So I know that there's been, there's been planning around the board member retreat. So I'm wondering like what's?
Yep, so I'll just say, for our general public, the board member retreat is just kind of like a yearly, ideally yearly, potentially once every few years, time for the board to step back and make sure that we're living up to our responsibilities. You know, Michael joked a month or so ago that this is a volunteer job, but we want to try to do our responsibilities as thoroughly as possible so that our school team is supported in supporting kids and families. So Alejandro just reached out to myself and Joe and we're going to partner with an external trainer for us again, just to facilitate that retreat. So board members, please be aware, we'll be reaching out to get your availability in the coming weeks. We'll reach out in the coming weeks for availability in the coming weeks after that. But it is something that for our families who are on the board, on the line, that, you know, we try to take as seriously as possible. We know that our partnership with the school is what, what allows them to create a great environment for you all.
Okay, we're ready for public comments. I'm going to open it up to the public.
We do have a number of attendees, so we could just go item, not item, person by person. Do you want me to say their name and see if they would like to speak? Okay, Alejandro, you see under the attendees? Okay, give us one moment, team. We're just going to make sure that we're all set and then we'll open it back up for public comments.
Alejandro, do you have any questions or comments? Angela, thank you for joining us. Do you have any questions or comments? Felipa, thank you for joining, or Alejandro?
Sounds like, can't wait. If there's anything you want to share, just let us know.
Hola, Guzmán, do you have any questions or comments? Thank you for joining us tonight. Hola, Guzmán. Gracias por estar con nosotros. Tienes pregunta o comentario? Hi, Jessica, thank you for joining us tonight. Do you have any questions or comments? Joan Lees, thank you for joining us. Do you have any questions or comments? Jasmine, hi Jasmine, thank you for joining us. Do you have any questions or comments?
I'm sorry, I might have pressed it by accident.
Okay, thank you for joining us. Sofia, hola, Sofia, ¿cómo estás? Gracias por estar con nosotros esta noche. ¿Tienes pregunta o comentario? Okay, thank you. Raquel Flores, ¿cómo estás? Gracias por estar con nosotros. ¿Tiene comentario o pregunta?
Buenas, buenas tardes o buenas noches. Este, no parece que todo está bien. Mi, mi preocupación era lo del transporte, pero ya miré este los mensajes que enviaron y que cambiaron el día. Ya no va a ser este miércoles sino viernes, el día que van a salir tempranito. Entonces parece que todo está bien.
Pero si tienes pregunta después puedes llamar a la oficina.
Muchísimas gracias.
De nada. Briana, hola Briana, do you have any questions or comments? Thank you for joining us tonight.
Sí, yo tengo una pregunta.
Sí.
Yo quisiera saber cómo, porque me parece, para el edificio azul, van a irnos de kinder primero y segundo.
Sí, para el edificio, que, para el edificio grande, el edificio azul es kinder a segundo. Y el edificio nuevo es tercero y cuarto.
Sí, quisiera saber cómo es que va a pasar con el bus, porque yo tengo dos niños y van a estar en diferente edificio. Uno va para tercero y el otro para segundo.
Sí, esa es una buena pregunta. Nosotros vamos a mandar información de la rutina que nosotros vamos a seguir para el autobús. Los niños que cogen el autobús en, que están en tercer y cuarto grado, nosotros vamos a traer esos niños para el edificio azul para que los hermanos y hermanas se, se moten en el autobús juntos en el edificio azul.
Okay, gracias.
Repeat the question in English.
Yeah, so her question was, just for English speakers, her question was that if you have two siblings that are in both buildings and they take the bus, how, what would be the procedure for that? And my response to that was that more information will be provided, but if there is a sibling in the red campus, they will be transitioned to the blue campus and the siblings will go on the bus together at the blue campus. Gracias por la pregunta, porque eso va a ayudar a otra familia, otra familia que tienen esa misma pregunta.
Gracias.
De nada. I think I went through.
We have Felipa.
Felipa, hola Felipa. Gracias por estar con nosotros esta noche. ¿Tienes pregunta o comentario?
Hola, buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Yo quería saber acerca de, de que yo no hice ninguna como aplicación nueva y ni tampoco recibí una llamada de la escuela. Yo no sé si, si mis niñas sigan en la escuela o ya no, tengo esa duda yo. Estuvieron el año pasado.
Si nosotros, si tú, si tú nos sacaste a las niñas de la escuela, la niña todavía está en esta, en esta escuela, yo voy a ver, todos los padres han recibido, han recibido información por Parents Square. ¿Tú revisaste Parents Square?
Sí, he estado pendiente acerca de las reuniones también. Ya ve que las han cancelado y he estado pendiente. Yo tenía esa duda de cómo yo no llené el formulario, porque me parece que enviaron uno y me han dicho también algunas personas que les han llamado de la escuela para saber si sus niños siguen y yo no llené el formulario y tampoco he recibido llamada.
Okay, entonces yo voy a investigar mañana, mañana quizá a lo mejor algo, el nombre está equivocado o el correo electrónico, pero yo voy a hablar con Margarita para asegurarme que están en la lista y ella se va a comunicar contigo.
No, bueno, está bien, gracias. Esa era mi duda nada más.
Okay, gracias.
Gracias.
Woods is on.
Hola, hi, Ms. Woods. I'm going to forget about Ms. Woods, I didn't see her name. Thank you for joining us. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, we just, we just landed, so I'm just, I'm just tuning in.
Thank you for joining us always, even away from vacation. Daisy, thank you for joining us. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you for joining us. Hola, Charles.
Hola.
Do you have any questions or comments? Thank you for joining us.
I'm good.
Señora Joanna. Ahorita me preguntaron si tenía alguna pregunta, pero no encontré cómo quitarle el modo al micrófono. Pero tengo inquietud, porque mi nena, ella estaba en el kinder el año pasado y tiene que repetirlo este año. Pero siempre me mantengo mirando a Parents Square para ver cuándo van a dar los CANE y esas cosas, saber en qué, en qué curso ya, a qué curso ya va a asistir. Pero no he recibido ninguna información. Traté de comunicarme a la escuela, pero me quedé esperando a que me regresaran la llamada. Si me pudiera ayudar con eso, porque ya comienza en el jueves. Yo no sé cuál es el nombre de su curso ni nada de eso.
Sí, soy la segunda persona que me comenta de que no he tenido comunicación. Y yo sí, yo he visto la comunicación y aprobado la comunicación, pero voy a revisar qué es lo que está pasando, porque tú no has recibido información.
¿Puedo añadir algo? Soy majo hablando. Voy a prender el video para que puedan ver. Me di cuenta que en Parents Square, aunque no hemos recibido las, la información completa sobre los cursos y todo, si uno entra a mirar al estudiante y entra a mirar en qué clases están, salen los nombres de los profesores. Entonces ya la información está en Parents Square, aunque no sale todavía la clase. Y imagino que pronto recibiremos el bienvenido este año información. Pero ya, ya se puede ir a Parents Square y encontrar eso bajo el estudiante y busca en qué clase está el estudiante. Toca como hacer como clic como en tres cosas adentro y por fin se encuentra la información.
Gracias, Mahal.
Son gusto.
Gracias.
Yo veo que hay, Jasmine tiene una pregunta.
So.
Sí, buenas. Yo quería saber cuál va a ser el skyshow para la primera semana de escuela, porque yo sé que siempre están, they do half day the first four weeks. And también había visto que habían dicho el año pasado que iban a cambiar the half day for Wednesday to Thursday, I mean to Friday.
Yes.
I just wanted to get an update on that.
That's definitely, so scholar orientation for kindergarten starts on Thursday. They are dismissed at 1:30 up until September 2nd, next Friday. And kind of first and fourth grade start on Monday and it's also a half a day for them. They will be dismissed at 1:30 as well up until next Friday. Yeah, so that we start, we also.
Okay, and for third grade?
Yeah, third grade starts on Monday, the 29th.
But it's full day or half day also?
The same, every, all the kids K to 4 to 1:30 until September 2nd.
September 2nd, okay, okay, got it, thank you.
You're welcome. And that is also, I wanted to go back to what Mahal said. When you go to Parents Square and you click on your student's name, the teachers' names come up. And also you get the information regarding the half days and when, when full day begins, which is September 7th. I see Sofía. Sofía tiene una pregunta.
Se fue de escuela. Soy Sofía, este, soy la mamá de Sofía y no he recibido información de ella también que en este, en base
Soy Sofía, este, soy la mamá de Sofía y no he recibido información de ella también, que en el, quién va a ser la maestra de ella de este año. Ella va a seguir allí en esta escuela, pero no tengo, no me han llamado para nada. Entonces eso quiero saber también.
Gracias, Sofia, por, uh, por esa pregunta. Eh, si tu niño o niña está en, en kindergarten, vas a, todos los padres van a recibir una, una notificación de la maestra presentándose, hablando de su, tú sabes, de su experiencia. Y si tu niño está en primero o cuarto grado, vas a recibir esa notificación, um, una carta de la profesora o profesor el lunes. So, uh, we just wanna translate. Um, Sofia asked, uh, about her teacher that she has not been informed who her child's teacher is. Um, and my response was that if your child is in kindergarten, you will receive a welcome letter from, um, your child's teacher. You know, introducing themselves, telling you a little bit about your background. And for first to fourth grade, you will receive that letter on Monday. Um, I want to take this opportunity to also say that not only when you get that welcome letter, but you will also get a folder that's a homework and family communication folder, um, with two name tags. One name tag for the student and one name tag for the parent. Um, our teachers don't know our families yet. Um, some do. Um, but these are, uh, new students in, you know, students are meeting teachers, right, for the first time. So we want to make sure that safety comes first. So during dismissal, it's really important that parents show ID and those name tags will help us as well.
Que si no le entendí, es que no habla inglés, entonces en español yo le.
Yo sé, yo sé, Sofia, yo iba a traducir. Yo estaba diciendo que tú vas a recibir una carta de la profesora, pero también yo estaba explicándole al público de, de que es importante que tenga identificación cuando venga a buscar a tu niño o niña por la primera semana hasta que los padres colocan a los, a los, a los, los profesores colocan a los padres.
Oh, está bien.
Okay, gracias.
Está bien, muchísimas gracias.
Okay.
Um, we have one other question, um, from Ms. Woods who wrote it in the Q and A. When will we hear about the meet the teacher via Zoom? So I know you just slightly different from what you just shared.
Yes, so we have, uh, that, we have meet the teacher, we have back to school night. Um, stay tuned for communication on that. But yes, we will have meet the teacher, um, right after the welcome letter that goes out. Um, and then we will have back to school night, the third week of September.
And then if, because Ms. Woods, I see your follow-up question, if she has any concerns around class placement or anything like that, who should she, you know, should she email the main office? And what is that email?
Yes, or if you have any concerns about your, um, child's teacher, you can contact Graciela, the DT, or myself.
And what are those emails?
Yes, so my email, yes. So you can email me at jangover@leetool.org or gwalker@leetool.org.
Okay, um, I think that covers our family questions, but I do, um, want to just ask our board members if they have any other comments. Melody, I think you had one from before. Do you want to share that?
Yes, my question was, uh, will there be any more meetings on Saturdays for the parents?
Oh, that's a good question. Um, our family, um, based on, based on family, um, surveys and multiple, uh, pieces of feedback, we're gonna do a com, a combination of ma, of family workshops during the week in the evenings and on Saturdays. So they rotate. Um, one month will be Saturday workshops and the next month will be in the, someday in the evening. We will also send information on that as well.
And this is optional, optional ways to get involved.
Mm-hmm. So the, the family workshops are optional, uh, but we will give, uh, advanced notice so that parents can make arrangements to be abroad.
Yeah, because I feel like more parents go to the workshops.
Yes, um, so, para, para traducir en español, Melody estaba preguntando de cuándo va a haber reuniones para los padres. Eh, puede ser reuniones de información, puede ser reuniones de entrenamiento, manera de, de ayudar a tu, a tu niño o niña en la casa. Y yo le dije que este año nosotros vamos a tener reuniones de padres, no solamente los sábados, pero también en las tardes durante la semana para poder darle la oportunidad a los padres, que no pueden llegar los sábados, pero en la semana. O pueden llegar en la tarde y no el sábado. Pero nosotros vamos a, a proveer la información de estos, de estas reuniones con participación para que los padres puedan hacer el arreglo para poder atender. Myra tiene una pregunta. Myra. Hi, Myra. Do you have, thank you for joining us. Do you have any questions or comments? I see your hand is up.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, I'm sorry. Uh, I don't know if you guys hear me.
We hear you.
Okay. Uh, no, actually I don't. I think the questions that I, well, the question that I was gonna, um, ask is the same thing that somebody already asked about the different schedules that they're gonna have from, because my son is going to fourth grade. And so I wanted to know the same thing about the bus, how it's gonna work then.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Myra.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
All right.
I think that covers our families. Um, the only other individual, Michael Vélez. I don't know.
That's always just kidding.
Disregard. Yep. Okay, so that covers everybody. Thank you so much, families, for being so present on the call. Um, it's really wonderful to have this involved of a family community. It is seven oh four. I'm gonna ask, um, Charles or Maho if we could have a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn at seven oh four.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you so much. And thank you, board members, for joining from the various locations. And hopefully we will all be back together in September in person. And best of luck to our families starting school. Boom. Okay, take care.
Bye.
Bye.